I don't believe we need a.
First, we don't need for subcommittee?
Yeah, I don't believe we need them for this, no.
Okay, perfect. Thanks, Crystal. Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. Good evening, everyone. My name is Emily Brophy and I am the Chair of the Planning Board Subcommittee on the Capital Improvement Budget and Program. I would, I would like to acknowledge the committee members that are present with us this evening. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Array. Ms. German. Mr. Haper.
Aye.
Mr. Heckman.
Aye.
Mr. Heinel. Mr. Hinton. Mr. Halupka.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Muneses. Ms. Panero. And Mr. Schulman. Okay, thank you, everyone. Tonight, we are meeting in a work session to hear from the Department of Recreation and Parks, the Property Management Division of the Office of Budget and Finance, and Baltimore County Public Library. After each presentation, members of the committee will have the opportunity to ask questions of the presenter. Before we begin the presentations, I want to note that I know there are members of the community in attendance of tonight's meeting. This meeting has not been designed to accept comments from citizens. The Planning Board held a citizen input meeting on October 17th, 2024, which was the opportunity for the board to hear from citizens on their issues concerning the capital improvement program. Now, I would like to invite Mr. Bob Smith from the Department of Recreation and Parks to begin his presentation.
Bob has to reboot. He's gonna be a minute, so if we wanna hang out for a minute or two or push to the next stage and say, sorry about that.
Oh, that's okay. I, that's why I was like, oh, I see his name on there. Um, we'll go ahead and give him a minute and then, um, if, if not, then we can go ahead and move forward and come back.
Sure, appreciate it. Sorry for that.
No worries. Do you see him popping back on by any chance, Crystal?
I don't see that yet.
Okay.
It looks like we have, yeah, it looks like we have him in here.
Yeah, that's why I was like, I see his name in there, but I can't hear him or see him.
He's rebooting. He'll be popping up.
He was in twice before.
But if we need to push on, we understand. Sorry about that.
Okay, all right. Um, so if everybody's okay with it, I'm gonna go ahead and skip ahead and then come back. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and move forward to Ms. Deborah Schindel from Property Management to begin her presentation.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to share a presentation that we have tonight for you and to let you know a little bit about property management in general. So hopefully you can see, let me collapse. Is everyone, can you see what's on my screen? No?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. Thank you. I was like, oh, so we are property management. The, um, we are actually tucked under the Office of Budget and Finance here in Baltimore County. Property Management provides services to all constituents and agencies within the county. We provide building maintenance, ground maintenance, custodial services, leaf man, lease management, and capital projects and enhancements, to name a few. The Building Maintenance Division is a very large division that maintains a total of over 260 primary buildings and another 675 ancillary buildings and structures, including but not limited to community centers, senior centers, libraries, fire stations, police stations, and pavilions and other items like that. We currently have over 6.6 million square feet of building space. Overall, the net new increase of square footage is predicted for FY25 of 150,000 and in the future will continue to increase. For FY25, our net new increase consists of 8212 Liberty Road, Meadow Creek Park, New Wilkins Police Precincts, the New Essex Police Station, we, uh, Woodlawn Senior Center, and Rosedale Rack, to name a few. Future net new increases consist of, you probably have heard, Macy's at Security Mall where we just purchased, the future home of the Essex Library, Sparrows Point Park, Hereford Senior Center, and the new Jacksonville Senior Center. We also do building operations in our division. We have 150 facilities we routinely clean. In a total, both in-house and contracted contractual services, approximately 150 facilities are routinely cleaned. We also take care of other ancillary facilities where we may lease, so we do a total of 5.6 million square feet of cleaning, and that's a total between in-house and contracted space. Our grounds maintenance division oversees over 2,000 mowing acres, 149 playgrounds, 166 bed maintenance sites, 380 artificial turfs and 300, no, that's wrong. I'm sorry, that's a typo. We have, um, we only have 28 artificial turf fields, forgive us, and 380 baseball diamonds approximately. As you probably know, we are a partner with Wreckin Parks and other agencies as they maintain their facilities. We're their support service. The historical capital budget expenditures. This only reflects what we call, um, the new building repair renovation and minor additions, um, capital project, um, funding. In 2021, we had 10 million. In 2022, we had 27.8 million. In '23, we had 23.4 million. And in '24, we had 79.8 million, which is a commitment from the county executive, the prior county executive. And in '25, we are anticipated to get 48 million point nine, 48 million point nine. Oh, my goodness, 48 million point nine. And that, uh, those repairs and, um, the funding that we get is actually to maintain and do all major, um, and minor renovations in buildings and repairs. It focuses on roof replacements, HVAC equipment, um, any kind of ancillary support of infrastructure that we have. How do we determine, uh, what our capital budget submission will be? We take into consider the master plan, guidelines and amendments, and we try to align with the county's mission and goals. We listen to the community. We listen for public, uh, health and public safety, and we enhance, we try to enhance the communities and what they're looking for. We consider timing. We try to match projects together. If something else is occurring where it makes sense for us to replace a roof at the same time we're doing an HVAC system, we try to combine that together. We have a large focus on sustainability. We take into consideration, is this a time to actually switch out, um, our HVAC equipment when we are doing replacements to go to a more energy efficiency or considered switching them completely moving from, um, fossil fuel into more electric fuel, which is environmentally friendly. So we take all of that into consideration. We consider the budget. We've reduced, uh, how will this reduce the operating budget for maintenance? We take into consideration how many times we've had to repair an asset or replace it, always considering what is available funding for the time. And we try to collaborate of county and alternative, uh, funding sources. So we may try to, we always say, use other people's money or tap into other people's money, state money or federal money that is available for those projects will help enhance them. And then, of course, we consider operations. What is the federal and state mandates at the time? And a systematic replacement strategic plan. Those are all taken into consideration when we put together our, um, forecast for what we would, we believe should be in our capital plan. We currently, our agency's capital projects currently open. Um, we have 70% of our open work orders are actually property management generated, meaning in-house, as we look at, property management wants to replace an HVAC or a roof. That is a work order we create and give to our capital team. And 83% of our work orders are generated by customer or citizens generated, uh, meaning, um, the agencies there, they want us to work on and, um, maybe a brand-new, uh, senior center, a new library, or they want us to renovate a space. Um, so we take that into consideration and we do 80, 83% of our work comes from their request. Right now, um, we have 346 total capital projects that are currently open within property management. The types of completed agency capital projects within the fiscal year 25. 104 of our projects are renovations or new equipment. 15 are new construction. 34 are office, including office moves and office furniture. Repairs, 161 repairs or routine maintenance. And then eight of them, uh, projects that we have right now are currently what we call design and study. They're not in construction yet. Project updates. We wanted to provide you some updates on projects that we are currently working on that you may be familiar with. The Banneker Museum, the roof repair and facade replacement. Construction was completed in October of, uh, 2024. The Pikesville Senior Center and Library, we replaced the, um, rooftop units. Um, construction is expected to start in March of 2025. We're currently underway. Randalls Town Fire, uh, we're doing a kitchen renovation for the fire department. Um, construction is expected to start in March of '25. And the Edgemere Senior Center HVAC replacement, construction is expected to be completed at the end of January of '25. We're buttoning that up right now. You can also see above, we have the Liberty Family Resource Center. We, um, have a generator and an, uh, UST replacement. Construction is expected to be completed at the end of this month. And the Bykota Senior Center renovation, construction is expected to start February of '25. Some other future projects that you're probably very familiar with is, um, our new Wilkins Police Precinct. As you can see, this is our conceptual drawing of what that will look like. Design is to be completed in summer of 2025. We also have our new Catonsville Fire. Our design is to be completed in summer of '25. And our Wilkins, I mean, excuse me, our Essex Police Precinct, which is a renovation and a new addition, design is to be completed in May of '25. And these renditions can, or concept plans will show you what they should look like. Some other projects we have are the Franklin Police Precinct Roof Repairs. Uh, we should be starting that very soon. The Pikesville Senior Center Library Elevation, Elevator Modernization. Um, that start will start sometime in '25. The Dunbarton House, repairs to foundation, roof, walls, windows and doors. Design is to be expected to be complete in June of '25. And the Police, uh, Precinct, excuse me, Pikesville Police Precinct UPS replacement. Start of equipment replacement will start sometime in '25. We're working on getting a start date for those. We are also working on, um, the Hannah Moore Center, which is probably, if you're familiar with the community there, it is where the former Hannah Moore School was. The county owns the building. When the school left, they turned it back over. We are making that a new police SOD complex. Uh, design is to be completed in September of '25. We have the new Jacksonville Senior Center, designed to be complete in May of '25. We have the Fullerton Fire Station. We, um, the women's locker room, construction is expected to start in the end of June of '25. And of course, as you can see pictured here in the rendering, the Hereford Senior Center, design is to be complete in July of '25. FY26 Projects Update. Some of the other things we're looking forward to be working on is the Detention Center. For those who do not know, we do not maintain the day-to-day operation of the detention center. However, um, we handle their large capital projects. And so you will see us give some updates on what we're doing for them. We are gonna be doing their generator replacement. The Cockeysville Senior Center Parking Lot Expansion, designed to be completed by the end of January '25 and construction to begin October of '25. The Police Marine Center, we are doing major parking lot repairs. The construction is expected to begin in the summer of '25. And then, Adese Senior Center Roof Replacement, we are going to be starting that project sometime, um, in the near future. That gives you a summary of some of a taste of all of our projects that we do here in property management. Additional capital projects for both the library and the, and recreation parks have been or will be presented to you by the agencies. Um, we are, as we said in the beginning, a support agency. Uh, we work very closely with, um, all of our sister agencies to try to make their, um, capital projects come to fruition and have them as a continuous partner from start to finish. And thank you, and I will take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Schindel. Um, does the board have any questions for Ms. Schindel? Um, okay, so I see a few hands up. Mr. Halupka?
A couple of questions. Uh, what is sort of the, the, you talked about the systematic replacement strategy plan. As we're adding new fields, new buildings, et cetera, uh, presumably that means that are just our baseline operation costs are increasing. And can you give us a sense of, you know, if, if we built nothing new, what would sort of be, what would we have to be paying on an annual basis just to maintain and repair our facilities?
Great question. So just to give you a little background, um, we actually last year did, or two years ago, excuse me, did a building assessment. We hired a consulting firm to go through all of our, our buildings. We did only 191 of them, um, because some of them are very small, um, buildings and we really wanted to concentrate on the very large facilities that we had. When they finished up their, um, assessment, we got a report, a very large report, um, on each building and all of the systems, all of the equipment in each building and when it should be replaced. Um, and the good news is, we have a very extensive report. Um, the challenge for us is that we are probably 20 years behind on, on maintenance or, and or not maintenance, but replacement plan um, on majority of our equipment. So this year alone, we have, that's how we started building our capital replacement plan based on the building assessments and what the third party had given us to, as a baseline of year one, you need to be doing these replacements. On an average, I would, um, the first year is 35 million. 35 million just to do complete year one, and year one started this particular year. Um, so obviously, with all of the enhancements, we, we still did not get all the funding we would need to complete everything we need for year one. So this budget year, we need approximately 35 million, and next year we would need about 40 million in order to keep in line with the building assessment. And so I, we recognize that's a very large capital commitment, and that's if we built nothing else. That's the kind of capital funding we would need to do to catch up in the county to maintain all the assets that we have.
And then at some point, would that start to, I mean, if, if you had sort of full funding for X years, would it then drop back down once you were sort of in, on pace? Or, you know, should we be looking at, you know, 35, 40 million dollars a year plus inflation? Indefinitely.
So we have a 10-year plan and, um, it is approximately about 35 million for each year at baseline minimum. If you would really s, to average it out, that's what you would need for the next 10 years every year in order to get caught up and then to be on track.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Ms. Schindel, I was just a follow-up to that question. Um, in the beginning, you had said there was a budget of 79.8 million in '24 and then a 48.9 million budget in '25. Is that inclusive of that 35 million per year that Mr. Halupka was speaking about, or is that exclusive?
So, if I remember correctly, and forgive me if I'm wrong, um, that was, we received that funding, but that was above and beyond. The 35 million is above what we would need to all in line. So that was not inclusive of what we received.
Okay, that makes sense. Got it. Thank you. Um, and then on that line, your net square footage is increasing in '25, but your budget is decreasing by a significant amount from almost 80 million to less than 50. Is that just budgeting reasons?
That's just budgeting reasons. It's, it's, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? I think, Mr. Haper, you have your hand up as well?
I do. So to get back to the, uh, fiscal year where there was the big infusion of additional funds, what was the source of those funds? Was it federal money? Was it state money? Was it, you know, why, why the huge increase in the one year?
Matt, do I have Matt Carpenter with me?
You do, Deb.
Okay, may you, you've covered that. I wanna make sure I'm not incorrect on that answer.
Well, the infusions have been primarily Pago from within our county's fund balance has been, been the main source of these additional infusions in budget, which were other items and things that identified by Deb and her team going along here. But, but as I said, it was primarily Pago from the county.
It just came from other county, uh, buckets of money?
Essentially, the county's fund balance within, uh, you know, the, uh, the general fund, fund balance.
And all the project, my second question, all the projects that you presented, those are underway and the funding is behind them to get them to completion?
That is correct. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Haper, are there any other questions? I'm scrolling my Brady Bunch screen to see if there are any more hands up. And I don't see any. So thank you so much, Ms. Schindel. We appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So if everybody is okay with it, I am gonna go back. I do see Mr. Smith back on the line. So I'm gonna go back on the agenda and invite Mr. Bob Smith from the Department of Recreation and Parks to begin his presentation. Um, but just right before you do that, Mr. Smith, I do wanna acknowledge that I did see a few other board members jump on the phone. Ms. Muneses is here, Ms. Panero is here, and Mr. Schulman is here as well. So, um, thank you so much, and the floor is yours, Mr. Smith.
Ms. German is here as well. She's a caller either.
Thanks, Ms. German.
Thank you, Chair Brophy and Chairman Halupka. Let me, uh, see if I can share my screen. Can everyone see the fiscal year 2026 slide deck now?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. Good evening, Chairman Halupka and esteemed members of the Playing Board. Um, as mentioned, I'm Bob Smith. I'm the Director, uh, here at the Department of Recreation and Parks. I'm pleased to offer you a presentation of the Department of Recreation and Parks' proposed FY2026 Capital Improvement Program. 2020, the 2024, 2025 year was a big year for our agency. Uh, we celebrated our 75th birthday as an agency um, and received our CAPRA accreditation, and that is the Commission for Accreditation for Parks and Recreation Agencies, is the only accreditation that an agency can receive nationally, and it makes us one of only 213, uh, agencies out of 10,000. Ms. Brophy, you had your, your hand up?
Oh, no, I was gonna do a little applause, but I couldn't find it. So congratulations on that.
Thank you. Yeah, it was a big accomplishment. Uh, our team worked about two years to, to receive that accreditation. And it highlights our commitment as an agency to best practices and providing quality opportunities to our residents and visitors. Having sufficient capital funding plays a big part in this and is essential to providing and maintaining a quality park and recreation system that supports both a wide range of both free time and programmed recreational activities. The Department of Recreation Parks continues to face the challenges associated with doing as much as possible with the available capital and funding is needed to adequately maintain, as our, our friends in property management, uh, so eloquently, uh, laid out there, uh, to maintain our expansive network of parks and recreation infrastructure and to enhance and revitalize our parks to meet the more not-modern recreation demands and to acquire and develop additional park sites, um, as needed. I do also want to commend the work by Deborah Schindel and the group at Property Management, who works, uh, hand-in-hand with us in the, uh, management of our capital projects. So, I can get, there we go. This Capital Budget Supporting Detail booklet for fiscal year 2025 includes a five-year capital program that programs future years' bases capital funding, including the amount proposed for FY2026. Capital funding for parks and recreation purposes is included within Program 212, Parks Preservation Greenways. A total of 15.2 million is programmed for FY2026, allocated within the seven capital project categories displayed on this slide. The 15.2 million in funding is allocated through five revenue sources. County bonds, Maryland program open space or POS, local open space waiver fee and lieu revenues, donations and other. It's important to note that the only revenue type whose amount is certain is the $8 million in bonds, having been approved by the voters during the 2025 general elections, or 2024 general election, sorry. The county's voters once again display their very strong support for parks and recreation with the 80.37% approval rating being the second highest of the nine borrowing ordinances approved. Should we note that the bonds are intended to be utilized over a two-year period and are front-loaded in even-numbered fiscal years? This factor is displayed in the total funding amounts displayed in the five-year capital program. The FY2026 capital budget includes $20,000 in donations and $650,000 in other funding. Both of these revenue sources are dependent upon the receipt of applicable outside funding. In the case of donations, the most likely sources of donated funds would be parks or recreation councils who contribute to the projects. Other funds most commonly derived from funds captured through the county's development processes, most often in the form of community benefit payments associated with planned unit developments. The amounts programmed for program open space and LOS waiver fees programmed for FY26 are rough estimates as shown here. In the case of LOS waiver fee revenues, the amount programmed may be higher or lower than the actual fee and lieu payments received in any given fiscal year. Adjustments to actual spending or use are then made based on the actual amounts. The amounts of fees collected can fluctuate significantly year-to-year as displayed on the table on your left. The 91,000, the $91,756 collected in FY2024 is just over 20% of the nine-year average of 439,000. Is just over twenty percent of the nine year average of four hundred and thirty nine thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars. As per the county code. The nonprofit land preservation organization neighbor space of Baltimore County is entitled to twenty percent. Of most LOS waiver fee in lieu of payments. The remainder are used for various caper projects within the agency's capital budget. County's program open space allocation is dependent. Upon the amount of POS funds approved at the state legislator each year with the amount of real estate transfer taxes collected being a prime factor. The amounts approved by the state legislators may also be impacted to annual adjustments made. To account for revenue collection and real estate trends. Baltimore County received approximately thirteen percent of the so-called POS local share. The graph on the right. Show. I'm sorry, the graph on the right shows the county's POS allocation amounts for fiscal years twenty nineteen. Through twenty twenty five, the annual allocation amounts were fairly consistent from fiscal years. Twenty nineteen to twenty twenty two raging to just over six million to just under seven million. The allocation amounts for fiscal years twenty three and twenty four. Were substantially higher at eleven point one and twelve point two respectively. And unfortunately, the twenty twenty five amount dipped to just under four million. Um, just near four point four million and nearly sixty four percent drop from prior fiscal year. The POS amount program for the agency's twenty twenty six capital budget is six million. Spending of POS will be adjusted as appropriate. Once the state of Maryland notifies the counties over FY twenty twenty six allocations. There are currently seven project categories through which revenue is allocated to funding a wide variety of capital projects. These project categories are holding places for budgeted CIP funding. With capital project allotments later created to initiate projects. For example. Most playground renovation replacement projects are typically funded out of P three oh one. Recreation facility renovations. While a new park development project will be funded through P three oh nine. Greenway streams, valleys and trails. Nature of each capital project category varies. P, P zero sixteen. Neighbor spaces typically restricted to funding only the annual open space waiver. Uh, to which that organization is entitled. P three oh one. Recreation facility renovations. P three oh two. Athletic field construction renovations and P seven five five. Park and recreation facility accessibility are predominantly utilized. For park and facility renovations and repairs. In the case of P three oh one and P three oh two. Feature multiple facility renovation and replacement programs. P three oh seven, community and neighborhood park development. And P three oh nine. Greenway stream valleys and trails development are most utilized for park enhancements. Or new park or facility development and they also fund some renovation projects. P six oh one. Park and recreation facility acquisition is restricted to funding the purchase of properties for park purposes. Also providing funding for acquisition related appraisals, title work and environmental. Environmental easements. P three oh one is recreation facility renovations. I'll now provide a brief overview of the primary capital projects in the parks. Preservation and Greenways Capital Improvement Program, including some highlighted. And or completed and underway. Project category three oh one. Is the primary source for park and recreation facility renovations and capital funded maintenance. A strong county investment in this project category is essential as some revenue sources such as program open space. Are intended to be expended on park acquisition. Development enhancement and they only be used for innovations on a limited basis. A total of three point three million is programmed, uh, for FY twenty twenty six. So P three oh, three oh one is used for a broad range of, uh, park and recreation facility renovation enhancement programs and needs. This side, this slide lists some of the more common uses. Of P three oh one. Some of the programs consist predominantly of renovations and repairs. While others are focused on facility and amenity replacements. You see in here. Picnic bench replacements and stairways, uh, water fountains. And different items like that. Playground replacements. One of the largest capital renovation programs funded out of P three oh one is the playground replacement and renovation program. Playgrounds. At approximately thirty five sites have been replaced since the start of FY twenty four. At a cost of approximately six point seven million. A substantial, a substantial amount of American Rescue Plan Act funding has also been invested. In playground replacement program. Supplementing county funds and other revenue sources. And you can see a number of the. Parks in which we renovated playgrounds this, over this last couple of years. Under, this is a listing of underway playground replacements. Uh, these playground replacement projects are all underway at additional thirty one sites. As per property management, there are approximately seventy playgrounds yet to be replaced. As of December twenty twenty four. Unless additional funding is secured over and above that program for P three oh one in twenty twenty six, it is anticipated that the six hundred thousand. In bonds allocated to the playground replacement program. Will likely only allow for three to four playground replacements. Please know that some playgrounds are replaced as part of a larger project. Such as those funded out of a local park comprehensive enhancement program in P three oh seven. And additional new playgrounds are sometimes component of new park development projects. Another larger renovation pro- programs funded in P three oh one is a sports court renovation. Program. This, uh, program renovates approximately two hundred and twenty five courts for which recreation parks has funding responsibility. This includes the courts both at, uh, park sites. As well as those located elementary school sites, uh, the agency and property management responsible. For, uh, park sites and elementary school sites related to courts. These include tennis courts, multipurpose courts. Most of which feature basketball courts and goals. Over the past several years, as I'm sure you're all aware, we have added the additional pickleball courts. Uh, to help address the, uh, large boom in demand for that recreational activity. Only six hundred thousand is presently allocated in this program for FY twenty twenty six. Which has limited impact since the average court renovation project will cost us approximately two hundred thousand dollars. It's important to note that the size of the project can vary widely, both as a result of the court sizes, the amenities and the. Conditions of the court surface. Projects are presently underway. The sites identified on this slide utilize, utilizing existing funds. And substantial ARPA designation. Project three oh two, P three oh two provides the majority of capital funding for the construction and renovation of athletic fields. Ball diamonds and associated lighting systems. A total of two point three million is programmed with this capital budget category for FY twenty twenty six, including one point eight million in bonds. Three hundred and fifty K in POS and one hundred and fifty thousand other funding. Some of the athletic field constructions and renovations are shown here. Uh, this slide describes a variety of ways that three oh two is P three oh two is utilized. Funding projects as small as replacement of players benches. Um, as large as constructing a new field, uh, such as you see here at Renaissance Park. Uh, diamonds and lighting systems. In calendar year twenty twenty four, Ripken Field was constructed at the fields at Renaissance Park in Essex. Leveraging a number of funding sources, including state and federal dollars. A long requested field lighting system was added at Linnover Park and Overly. Utilizing highly effective and energy efficient LED. Uh, lights. Capital programs funded through P three oh two likewise continued, including those associated with the nearly three hundred and ninety. Ball diamonds at parks, elementary school, recreation centers. A large scale one hundred and sixty five thousand dollar project was recently initiated. At Baltimore Highlands Elementary School Recreation Center to ensure that those facilities remain safe and playable. So capital program contingencies category, uh, during the FY twenty twenty five capital budget process, there was some. Some expressed concerns over the agency's request for contingency funding for multiple capital project categories. Including P three oh two. Uh, contingency funds unlike most other capital funds are not specifically tied to an individual capital project. Or programmed during the budget process. Instead, they are intended to fund miscellaneous as needed work. Sometimes to address emergencies and public safety issues. As this slide displays, uh, this is a, sometimes as, sorry, as this slide, uh, displays. Uh, sometimes there are large, uh, projects such as this is a replacement project at Eastern Regional Park. Uh, after a pole blew down instructional flaws in the manufacturing were discovered. Uh, it resulted in a replacement of all the poles, uh, on the athletic field side of that facility. At a cost of, uh, one point five million dollars. Another use of the funds was to address the, uh, unfortunately common. Place theft of lighting system wiring, uh, which we have seen, uh, a couple of occurrences of in Baltimore County. And finally, where Baltimore County Property Management has an ongoing budget for the maintenance of athletic field lighting. It's becoming more commonplace for that maintenance programs. Year project threshold to be exceeded resulting in the funding. Needing to come from the recreation parks capital budget. P three oh seven is community and neighborhood park development. Uh, provides funding for most of the department of recreation parks, largest scale development enhancement projects. Despite P three oh seven's name and use for development enhancements at all types of parks. And occasionally for larger scale projects at school recreation centers such as. The recently opened recreation activity centers in Middle River and Over, Middle River and Roseville. Four point six million is presently programmed for this purpose in the proposed FY twenty twenty six capital budget. With the primary revenue sources being bonds and program open space. County year twenty twenty four saw the completion of a number of significant multi-year capital projects. Funded out of P three oh seven, including those displayed on the following slides. Major capital projects such as these regularly take two, three or longer. Uh, years to complete from start to finish. As there's a lengthy process involving input, design, review, permitting and construction. One of the highlights is the Middle River Recreation Activity Center. Opened in August of twenty twenty four. On the grounds of the Glenmar School Recreation Center. This, uh, one point, eleven point eight million dollar aviation themed center features a large multi-use gymnasium. Uh, retractable screen, number of multipurpose rooms with retractable walls, kitchen facilities. And other support spaces such as restroom, storage areas and offices. Is a more modern version of our, our newer area of recreation centers, which were normally the Powell Centers. Uh, being approximately fifteen thousand square feet. Uh, in size, centers to, two to three times larger than our old sites and allowing for a greater functionality. And allowing them to not only serve, uh, the kids in the programming, but offer a broader range of public. Recreation opportunities. Hazelwood Skate Park opened in October twenty twenty four, four point three million dollar skate park. Uh, first concrete ball skate park the county has built in over fifty years. Uh, on the ten point five acre Hazelwood Park that was undeveloped previously. Skate parks such as Hazelwood and other counterparts, uh, throughout the county provide, uh, a needed amenity, uh, for our skateboarding community. As you can see in the photos, uh, facility not only serves skateboarders, but those who ride BMX. Uh, scooters, uh, rollerbladers, uh. And of course the skateboarders. Uh, this does, was designed by internationally renowned skate park designer pillar. Pillar Design Studios. And had significant input from the public and from our skateboard council. Uh, the state of the art facility has a number of bowl, concrete bowls. Rams, ledges and rails. Meadow Creek Park, uh, one point nine million dollar Meadow Creek Park project situated on four acres in Pikesville. Uh, was dedicated in October of twenty twenty four. This neighborhood. Park reflects the strong desire of communion groups to maximize green space. And highlight natural landscaping. Uh, this was a from design passive park, uh, which was, uh, a new. Kind of a new, uh, project for us to do. The stream. Bisection of the park was a major consideration during the, uh, park design. We came up with some innovative crossing. Uh, areas with the park, pedestrian bridge, walking pathways. We have gathering spaces, uh, little gaming tables and other amenities here at this park. The second of our recreation activity centers was opened this year. This is the Roseville Recreation Activity Center. Uh, this is a, a esports system, uh, in this facility. Uh, focusing on the e-gaming and computer industry. Um, it's on the grounds of the McCormick Elementary School Recreation Center. There's twelve point six centers. Design includes changeable LED lights in the interior and exterior. Uh, graphic mimicry, search, circuitry, uh, other technology related art and imagery. Throughout the facility, as you can see. Uh, range of spaces, again, a large gymnasium for activities. A dedicated computer and console gaming area. As well as traditional gaming areas for, uh, regular recreation activities. Diamond Ridge Family Park, our renovation, significant park renovations enhancements to the six point seven acre park. In Windsor Mill were complete in December. Has long suffered from access problems associated with the wooden footbridge and was often damaged and needed to be removed. Um, this nine hundred thousand dollar park renovation project. Created a, a new, more accessible stream crossing. In place of a collapsed culvert and added concrete access stairs to the pond. Replacement appears in the park's pond and accessible picnic area. Sparrow Point Park. Uh, this is in the next flu size, displayed in the next few slides, sorry. Display a number of underway projects are expected to be completed. The county's largest new park development is in a decade is Sparrow Point Park. It's being constructed on twenty two acre waterfront parcel donated to the county by Trade Point Atlantic. This project will result in the transformation of a former industrial area. Into a, a vibrant, uh, new park. Um, will have both indoor and outdoor activities, double gymnasium. Uh, synthetic turf field kayak launch and fishing pier. Uh, these photos are from a October hard hat tour we took this year. This slide lists the number of larger P three oh seven funded projects expected to be completed in or shortly after this calendar year. All of the identified projects involve park enhancements with the disc golf course. Uh, and associate parking lot to be developed at Days Cove Park being the first recreational development of that. Property and the first from design disc golf course we've ever built. The top right image shows one of the new disc golf holes at County Home Park. And originally, and it has been quite the popular, uh, use and just shows the need to. Lean into newer trends in recreation. Many other projects funding through P through a seven are underway and is anticipated that the funding in the FY twenty twenty six. Capital budget will be utilized for the park enhancements at one or more of the Christian parks. Project category three oh nine, Greenway Stream Valleys and Trails is used for trail and path renovations. Enhancements and construction, a total of one point two million is presently programmed for this project category. For twenty twenty six. Long planned second phase of park enhancements at Fort Howard Veterans, uh, Parkland Roadpoint Peninsula. Was modified from a path with a pier. To a paved accessible path leading to a canoe and kayak launch. We, the county has done a number of new kayak and canoe launches. Uh, again, trying to, uh, be mindful of new recreation trends. This location within the park's locations inside Chesapeake Bay Critical Area. Environmental protection was key during, uh, design and construction of this project. Six hundred thousand dollar Millford Mill Trail renovations project at Villanova in the Millford Mill community is a, is at least nearing completion. Is it last, sorry, nearing completion. The project has experienced a number of delays, including adjustments required as a result of significant erosion issues. Along Gwynne Falls. Which is adjacent to this part of the trail. Working on trail included repaving of nearly one mile portion of the trail. Rerouting of a section in the area prone to erosion. Redecking of the boardwalk, bridge. Parking paving and drainage improvements. Project cavity six oh one, uh, which is from the call park and recreation facility acquisition is the funding source for a wide range of property acquisitions. For park purposes, three point two million is programmed for acquisition. And FY twenty twenty six. Almost all of which is program open space funded. Under POS rules, a minimal of fifty percent. Of each year's POS allocation must be expended on parkland acquisition. As with other project categories with POS funding. The budget amount is not necessarily accurate as the actual county POS allocation amount is usually not known. Till after the county budget is formulated and approved. Some recent acquisition sites, uh. We had a pretty big year in acquisition. Uh, with over twenty two point eight million, uh, invested in the purchase of five properties described on the slide. Two small park additions were acquired. As were two sites to serve as waterfront parks and the unique site with a very large structure that will be retrofitted to serve as both a new recreation center. And the home of a bigger, better Randallstown Library. Southern County and Maryland POS revenues were. Invested in these park acquisitions. These acquisitions closed at a period of strong investment. In park acquisition during the Yasheski administration. During which approximately six hundred and five acres of land were acquired at twenty one sites. Throughout the county of a cost of more than forty two point five million dollars. You can see those listed here, uh, on this slide. Project P seven five five is used for a variety of park and accessibility projects such as adding or renovating park and facility paths or renovating facilities to be more accessible. Should be noted that the projects funded out of other capital categories. Might also expand accessibility or provide adaptive facilities intended to be as highly accessible as feasible. For example, at Sparrow Point Park, it's a fully accessible playground installed. Recreation parks has increased interaction and communications with the county's commissioner of disabilities. May ever to make county parks and recreation sites more universally accessible. Five hundred thousand dollars in bonds is programmed for P seven five five. One project budget in this category is the rock, is the path, the point path at Rocky Point Park. Say that a couple of times really fast. The point at the end of Rocky Point Park is long been a popular destination for fishing. As well as enjoying a scenic waterfront. The point path pictured in the lower left. Had eroded badly over time and ultimately posed a safety hazard to users. Approximately nine hundred thousand dollars. Has been invested in the design and construction of the solution. Utilizing elevated boardwalk areas that resolved the problem and greatly expand accessibility. Project is now nearing completion with its last component being the construction of additional pavilion. A top and existing impervious area by the points access path start. Kind of was able to procure American Rescue Act funding. American Rescue Plan Act funding to support this project. And then finally, another substantial park renovation project with focuses on expanded access is to take place at the nineteen point eight acre. And then finally, another substantial park renovation project with focuses on expanded access is to take place at the nineteen point eight acre Rosedale Park this spring. The design having recently been completed this project. This project with park enhancement will improve park enhancement while vastly improving access to existing park facilities and amenities. And we thank you as always for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Does anyone have questions for Mr. Smith? Mr. Halepka?
Um, a couple of questions. I just want to make sure I'm understanding. How much open space money does, does your department get?
It varies year. I mean, obviously varies year by year. We're, I'm looking out on the. On the notes, as you can see in the slide deck. We've taken a significant drop in program open space. So. In, I'm pulling it back up. We are down just over four million dollars in program open space from a. Four point four, nearly sixty percent drop. From the years of twenty three and twenty four where we had eleven point one, twelve point two and twenty three and twenty four. We were down to four point four in FY twenty five.
And those are state funds or county funds?
Those are state funds.
That's what I thought, but half of that money you're saying has to go to park acquisition.
Acquisition, yeah. Program open space requires half to go to acquisition.
So. I mean, this sort of ties back into the question I had to miss Shindel. It means that every year the open space is sort of adding to the. You know, this, the minimum. Set of money we need to maintain. You know, we're constantly adding and so you're adding to the budget of what it takes to maintain these facilities. Am I right about that?
Absolutely. Now, in some cases, it may be POS acquisition of, of a site that is, is not. Developed, you know, that is not in line to be developed where it may just be woodland or something like that. So it's going to depend site by site. What the maintenance level that brings.
Sure. Then a sort of a somewhat related question, the. The LOS waiver fees, I'm assuming that's dependent on how much development's occurring in the county?
I believe so. I have Patrick McDougall, who's our, our capital budget.
Yeah, I can tackle that one. Yes, sir. It really varies widely. It's not just the amount of development. It's also. Sort of the pace of approved local open space waivers. And then what, when they end up being paid. Within the development process for the county, there is no timeline that says that. Approved LOS waiver needs to be paid within X number of years. And it's generally highly dependent on when a development goes forward. So the, the payment would need to. Take place if there's an approved waiver prior to residential development beginning.
So if the pace of development slows, which. It appears to be, you know, it has been happening for a while and looks like it'll continue. That'll mean you'll have less LOS funding as well.
That's correct, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Hayfer, you also have your hand up.
Yes, hi. I have three questions. The first one has to do with the. Light pole where you found the structural integrity issue and had to. Replace all of those light poles. What, what's the liability of the manufacturer on that?
I may defer to Deborah Shindo for a moment on that. I'll give you the background. We had two poles go down in a. Couple of years apart. And so we, and Deborah, please correct me if I'm wrong, but we brought in a company to x-ray. All of the poles in the park. And the ones on the athletic field side were found to be close to or in danger of failing, but I believe we were outside. Of the manufacturer, like, what, it's like a better term, warranty on those.
Correct. So it wasn't just a little bit. It was, they were twenty years old or more. And during the process of many years, the county added additional structure to them, added more lighting to them. And so we believe that may have, you know, weakened the base of them. And that was an issue at the time. And that's why we had them all x-rayed as we, we were concerned because all these bank of lights were added. And so they were well in the twenty year range.
Yeah. So it wasn't that the manufacturer did anything wrong in the steel or anything like that. It was, they basically wore out.
Yeah, basically. And when they added the extra bank of lights to it, it really, they were not designed to take. Originally, when they were installed, they didn't have that extra bank of lights on. So whenever it got installed, it, it kind of caused an integrity issue that no one was aware of at that time. And then they realized they can't handle that weight, extra weight they weren't designed for.
Okay. My second question. I appreciate the Baltimore County Wreckin Parks focus on the. The newer trends in recreation as you referred to them and to try to meet the needs of the people who take advantage of those. But I'm just wondering about, if you measure utilization. Just because something's a new trend, doesn't mean it's something that's here to stay. And that you were talking about a lot of money being spent on a lot of different, well. So a lot of money on a few different new trend. Creations that, that isn't available to go to other things. I just wondered, how do you, how do you make sure? That, that you're getting the utilization that you thought you were going to get. I hope somebody's thinking or projecting what utilization is going to be before you even invest in these things. How, how does that all work?
Sure. And I can speak like to the skate park, right? We hadn't had built a skate park in, in fifty years. But we received like. An enormous amount of community input for the need for additional skate parks and not. And not a, what we, what we call a, a street skate, you know, a modular skate park build. But an actual from design, concrete bowl. And I mean, and I can tell you anecdotally that, that, that facility is heavily used. Now, also when we talk about like disc golf. We, we get updates from the disc golf community on. The, the disc golf app on how many users are coming to the park to utilize the disc golf. Site that we put in the county home park. If you're speaking to the newer trends like pickleball, I don't believe that one's ever going to go away. If you've been to any of the budget town hall meetings. I think we will continuously look to add pickleball courts. Across the system because we, we are seeing a serious uptick in the use. So I, I mean, some of these, I mean, and to be, to be blunt for, for probably. Six years, we didn't build a park. As an agency. Like we added nothing. To, to the county for a long stretch of time prior to this. So, so when you look at our comparative. Comparatives to other municipalities, we are still behind the curve in many ways. In meeting recreation needs.
Yeah. I, I guess there's no way to, to determine whether all of these users are from Baltimore County or whether they're coming in from. The surrounding jurisdictions, right?
There isn't. I mean, there's a little bit. I mean, for our programs in Recreation and Parks and our department programs that we, that we run, we, our regions, we can track zip codes. And see where the users are coming from. But I will add that Baltimore County isn't the only place funding these and they should not only be used by Baltimore County residents. The state is funding these in federal dollars and our parks are open to all users regardless of where they live. Just as, you know, any municipalities parks.
Part, public goods. Last question, just so I understand how handoffs work. So. Let's take the Rocky Point handoff between agencies. Let's take the Rocky Point path rebuild. Once, once you've had that built, who, who's responsible for maintaining it?
Well, currently property management maintains all of our, our parkland, whether that's the mow teams or the. You know, solid waste those trash pickup. A property management will do the, what we consider the park maintenance. On those parks. Our agency does not have a park maintenance division. Maintenance is centralized in the county under property management. So they would handle. Repair occur or something of that nature. We would initiate it with them. But, but their team would generally either handle it in-house. Or if it required a contractor, then we would, then they would bring in a contractor to do the work.
So when, when someone has an idea for a new, a new creation of some sort. And that, I assume like a proposal is put together and it comes to you or however this process works that gets approved. Does that also always include the out year maintenance costs? Because, you know. It's always easy to come up with ideas for new and great, wonderful. Next thing, best thing since sliced bread, the next project, but nobody's thinking about the ten year, the cost over the next ten years on maintaining all these wonderful ideas. And so how, how does that work? I mean. Does, does somebody have an idea of what these maintenance costs are going to be so that? That property management can then say, okay, understand our budget's going to go up. We're going to need more money because you're giving me more things to, to control.
I mean, we, we do try, much of it's tied in operational funding, though not capital. So. We build out some operational expense budget areas that we work with property management on. But we, we are not doing like a. You know, at least on our side, because we don't do the, the added acres of mowing, for instance, if we added, like we said, four hundred and five acres, we don't. That's under the property management's purview, but we will build other pieces into our operational budget because we also have account for things like staffing and. Office equipment and, and things that we need for our new facility. So we handle that on, on our side. But I, I can't speak for like the, the mowing acre increases, for instance.
So property management doesn't. Bill wrecking parks for whatever it costs to maintain the wrecking parks and it comes out of the wrecking park's budget.
No, sir. So just for clarification, because this is Deb Shinder from property management. What happens is when we start talking about a new park or we know of an acquisition. Again, libraries and other agencies are our partners. As soon as we property management know, we start running, what we do is say, hey. We're going to have to add additional. And so we know we have to mow and we'll go out and take square footage and say. You know, without getting a formal proposal, we say it costs X amount to. Mow and, and per acre and we'll know if it's a building, how much it's going to cost to clean it. So we will start building that planning tool in our operational, not capital, but our operational budget. As much as possible so that like, for instance, this coming year. We're adding approximately a hundred and five, a hundred and fifty thousand square feet. We're trying to estimate how much it's going to cost. To, for that new asset for us to maintain and we're building that into our operating budget as we know they're coming online and we're able to work with the agencies of forecast when they'll come online.
Okay, great. Thank you both. I appreciate it.
Sure. And, and sir, I'll add. Deborah's team is part of all of our capital development. So they're fully involved in what each amenity has, as we're designing. So we're, we're all at that table together.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Smith and Ms. Shindel. Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Smith? And I know, Ms. German, you're on by the phones. So just cut me off if I don't see any hands or anything.
Chairman, if I may make a couple of comments?
Yes, please. Go ahead, Director Lafferty.
First of all, Bob. Kathy Wilson would be dancing in the street to see what's happened at Diamond Ridge Park. I, I know she advocated for that and you all have really delivered and. Really far beyond perhaps what she expected. So thank you very much on behalf of a former planning board member. Who maybe pushed a little bit hard, but you know, it was for good reason. Secondly, is Scott Aluka's question to Pat and you about the. Local open space. The other element I would add is that not every project. Gets local open space funding. Often, but I think what we've seen is a diminution in the ability of, or the willingness of developers. To invest in the project on site. And so local open space funds. Have, you know, very, they deviated over time. From enormous projects to now very small projects. And the third is, if I may ask Director Smith. So many of the projects are, you seemingly. Looked at the county as a whole in your investments. Can you address the issue of equity and how? Some equity has played a role in some of your decisions about. Where the investments are, whether it's a rack center or a playground improvement. Because one, it's an important element in the, in the county, former county executive, current county executives' goals. But also I know in the way that you've approached investments.
Sure, sure. And I won't take complete credit for the, the lens on equity. Our, our former director, Rosalyn Johnson, was championed. For us to look more holistically. At our, our, you know, kind of recreation opportunity across the system. Which is why you see the very strategic locations of. The, you know, the rack centers located. You know, in close proximity to elementary schools to increase accessibility for those users. You know, and then you look at like the skate park location, it mirrors, we have a skateboard on the west side in Lansdowne. And now we have an appropriate skateboard on the east side. And then additionally, it applies to how we look at acquisition and trying to acquire. Land in areas where we may be, you know, park deficient. To try to improve that. So we, we try to look across the spectrum. I'd, I'd love to build a rack center in every. You know, kind of in every community. And I'm sure every community would like us to. But we do understand that the, the funds are finite and, and so we have to kind of focus on some areas of the biggest need. So for instance, the rack centers will go in locations where we think we're gonna. You know, the communities may have been under invested in or socioeconomic disadvantage to take, to try to improve. Their bill, their access to recreation in those communities.
Thank you, Bob, for your leadership. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Director Lafferty. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. Thank you so much for your presentation. Oh, go ahead.
Ma'am, I think Mr. Halepka has his hand up.
Oh, there you go. Thank you.
Actually, something you just said, how do you identify communities where they're sort of park deficient?
Uh, we can, a variety of ways. We have a park finder app, which allows us to look at all of our park sites in locations now. And then we can look at our existing inventories and kind of. You know, pick out, you know, where we think we need to make some additions. We also do. Quite a bit of input from the community. There are forty four Recreation and Nature Councils throughout Baltimore County. Who are, and they're kind of scattered in all the communities. Our staff meet with them regularly. We take input from. The planning board. We do a LPP RP as part of our. You know, process with the state to survey the public. The last two years for the first time, we've done not just the county's budget town hall series, which has, has been. A great opportunity to hear from residents. The agency has initiated four listening sessions with communities each year as well to hear their needs. So, so through a variety, you know, there's not ever one right answer on how to get input on what's needed. But so we do a variety of ways to take that input.
I guess one of the things I've been curious about is how much sort of residential density plays into it. So. Communities where there's a more dense, I would think, you know, they're.
It's, it's tougher, right? In, in communities where the residential, where the density is higher, it, it's tougher to identify parcels to acquire. You know, or the price of those goes up. And so with program open space, we're limited to appraised value. In some cases where, you know. We can only go to the appraised value of program open space acquisition funds. So there, you know, obviously puts a ceiling on where we can go, but it, it is more difficult in the denser community areas just because land is, is scarce there.
Sure. And then sort of conversely, I guess what I'm, I've never been sure about places where we have very low density. So you may not have any parkland, but you know. Homes are on two, three, four acres parcels. They may not have any parks per se, but you know, does that show up as, oh, you need a park? Or is it like, well, these are large lots, so they don't necessarily.
Need. Yeah, we, we've long, yeah, we've long faced a challenge. Yeah, we, we've long, yeah, we've long faced the challenge, like in North County is a good example, where we face the challenge there, they're kind of field deficit. They need some more athletic fields up there in North County, very vibrant recreation programs. We hear a lot from the residents and users. And so we acquired the Belfast Road property next to Sparks Elementary that we're going to be developing athletic fields on. Sometimes in North County, you run into ag pres and other restrictions that would prohibit you from building parkland. So the challenges are different in different parts of the county. And so we just try to navigate those, but we're, if anyone knows of property coming available, please let us know. We are always open to acquiring land. A good example is the Days Cove property that we're putting a disc golf course on. We, we acquired that many years ago. And did not have suitable use and then eventually found a suitable use. So we're, we also like to try to find parcels of the land bank and then come in, even if we're not ready to develop them at that time. We like to keep them in case we, we can develop them in the future.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Thank you so much, Mr. Smith. That was very informative.
Certainly. Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay. So next we are going to invite Ms. Sonia Alcantara Antoine from Baltimore County Public Library to begin her presentation. And I hope I said your last name correctly.
You did. Thank you so much. And good evening, esteemed members of the planning board. Thank you for your time this evening. I'm here to talk about libraries and our capital projects. I love talking about libraries and the fact that I get to do this as part of my job is, is awesome. I'm joined this evening by James Cook, who is our chief operations officer and Justin Hartzell, who is our capital projects manager. Next slide, please. All right. So our mission at Baltimore County Public Library is to provide opportunities to explore, learn, create and connect. So basically what that means is that we're going to provide access to the resources that are going to help people be successful in school, work and in life. Public libraries offer opportunities for literacy and lifelong learning as well as opportunities for entertainment, recreation and play, exploration and discovery and connections. We truly have something for everyone. And our facilities, our branches provide many of the opportunities that I just mentioned. Next slide. So although people associate books with libraries and books are a core traditional part of what it is that libraries do, we are not just about books anymore and we haven't been for quite a while. Public libraries are really ultimately about transformation, transformation of individual lives, families and whole communities. We serve everyone from all walks of life and at all stages of life and we do it for free. So we are really a valuable part of, and an integral part of community life. And we're integral to the quality of life for anybody in, in a community. Every great city, every great community also has a great public library. The two are not mutually exclusive. I challenge you to think of a great city or a great community, a great county in the United States, in the world. And I will, I can guarantee you that they also have a great, well-funded, well-resourced public library. Libraries facilitate lifelong learning. So we're here to connect you with whatever it is that you're going to need to live your best life, whether that's a book, whether it's a computer wifi access, a resume writing class, one-on-one help in applying for a job, a 3D printer, a sewing class, a technology class, a referral to a community resource, connection to a social worker, hands-on instruction on how to repair your bike or cook dinner. We serve everyone in the community. We facilitate curiosity and critical thinking and we are trusted institutions that facilitate connection, which is really critical at a time when people are more isolated than ever before. And there is an epidemic of loneliness in our country. And libraries are the antidote to that. Next slide, please. The primary vehicle for Baltimore County Public Library to deliver transformation is through our facilities. A big priority for B C P L is getting our facilities up to 21st century standards. We, we proudly partner with property management on modernizing and transforming our facilities and they are fantastic partners, collaborators and co-conspirators, and we really do enjoy our relationship with them. We have 19 facilities total and about 12 of them need to be brought up to date so that they are modern, relevant, attractive and inviting. The average age of our buildings in Baltimore County is about 50 years old and life looked very different 50 years ago, which puts the onus on us to, to modernize our, our facilities. Back in the day, a long time ago, when I was a baby librarian, working at another library, I was working in a building that was 150 years old. And I saw a customer unplug the public copier machine so that they could charge their cell phone. If that doesn't perfectly encapsulate the challenges of serving a modern community with a building that is old and outdated, and then I don't know what does. And so here at Baltimore County Public Library, we really focus on being able to serve our 21st century community with 21st century library spaces. Another opportunity for us is that the, the state guideline is that we have one square foot of public library space per capita. And currently we have half the recommended square footage that's recommended by the state. So some of our newer projects that we're going to be talking about later on in this presentation are going to be expanding the current footprint so that we can serve our community adequately. People still use libraries, but they just use them in different ways. And libraries of the future have to be flexible and adapt to changing preferences and expectations of a 21st century audience. Next slide.
Good evening, members of the planning board. My name is James Cook. I'm the chief operations officer for Baltimore County Public Library. And I'd like to talk a little bit about some of our current projects and the underlying philosophy behind all of our capital efforts over the next several years. The slide you're looking at right now talks about our building philosophy and I won't read the slide to you, but to summarize, the key driving factors for us in all of our renovations and new buildings is to design spaces and buildings with equity in mind, with access in mind and with sustainability in mind. We are looking to create spaces that are flexible, adaptable, that can be used for future growth and new uses, whatever they might be. And as Sonia mentioned, libraries are used very differently now than they were 50 years ago, and they certainly will be used differently 50 years from now. We also want our buildings to be places of pride and inspiration within the community. So all of our capital projects and designs are meant to bring those prideful places to very, some very needy communities and some communities that have been underrepresented and underserved in this way in the past. Next slide, please. This year, we completed some really landmark projects that sort of are signposts for the direction in which B C P L is going with our capital projects. We created, we've completed a renovation of our restrooms at Pikeville. And while that may not seem particularly glamorous, it is part of and the culmination of about $3 million worth of improvements that we put into the Pikeville branch over the past year. And as Ms. Shindel mentioned in her presentation, there are more improvements to come with the HVAC system and the elevator at Pikeville. And we're very excited to see all of these things happening to this heavily used branch. But our real landmark event this year was the opening of our Catonsville Library after a 16 month renovation, a long project, seven, $7 million renovation where we essentially gutted the building and completely reimagined the interior spaces and the services there. So what you're looking at on the slide right now is, is the main adult space in our renovated Catonsville Library, which is bright and light filled and represents all of the goals of our B C P L building philosophy. Next slide, please. These are some details from the Catonsville renovation. We just opened this in late August of 2024. As I said, it was a $7 million project partially funded by the Maryland State Library through their capital grant program. One of the great features of the Catonsville Library is that we were able to install two state of the art recording studios. These are the first recording studios in the Baltimore County Library system. They are free to all customers and citizens to use and they are being heavily used already. And we're very excited to see this much needed and exciting service that is being so warmly embraced by the community. Next slide. These nine projects that you see on the screen right now represent our focus for upcoming, current and upcoming capital projects for the next several years. The first two are projects that are underway right now that we are just about to begin construction on. The third is an HVAC project for our North Point branch, which is intended to replace a very aged HVAC system, and it is a critical project for us. And there are several others that we'll talk about more at length in a moment. These again represent our focus on bringing new library services and new library facilities and renovated library facilities to our neediest communities and to communities that have been historically underrepresented in the past. Next slide. We are all about equity and equality at the Baltimore County Public Library. We try to make sure all of our libraries are touched by renovation and improvement every year. In the past year, all 19 of our branches saw some sort of improvement, whether that be a renovation, whether that be new furn, new furnishings or other minor improvements. We also look at equity. Are we reaching the people who are underserved in our communities? Are we providing the services and resources and facilities that they really need? And one of the ways that we monitor that and determine our equity priorities is by looking at the social vulnerability index. Next slide. Again, this is an index that looks at census tract information to identify those communities where, that, those communities where needs are highest, where resources and services are limited or missing and where libraries can do the most good and be the most impactful in providing spaces for community, for gathering, for information and for access to resources. You will notice that several of our projects are in the high social vulnerability areas of the county, and that's intentional so that we can really serve those communities and provide resources that they really need. Next slide. And I will turn it over to Justin Hartzell, our capital projects manager.
Evening. I'm Justin Hartzell. I'm here to talk about the exciting stuff, some of the fun new projects that, that we're working on, some of the, the high density communities that we're talking about. So as you can see in the sample photos, the Woodlawn Branch renovation expansion is an exciting transformation. It's one that B C P L will look to as the new benchmark for our capital projects moving forward. Architects Quinn Evans were awarded this $22 million project, which is funded by Baltimore County and its anticipated construction will start in 2025 and conclude hopefully in 2027. Additionally, we secured a temporary Woodlawn branch. This is based at 6660 Security Boulevard. And that is to ensure that the Woodlawn community will have library service for the duration of this construction project. In the Randalltown community, property was purchased at 8212 Liberty Road. The site will feature a complete renovation of the current 100,000 square foot building. 50,000 square feet of this will be dedicated to the new Randall, the new Randalltown branch, and we will be co-located with Racks and Parks. We are working with Grim and Parker and we recently completed community engagement meetings on November 18th and November 22nd. And we are now moving into the design phase of this project. Overall, $31 million in total in state funding secured for the project and constructions planned from 2027 through 2029. For the Essex branch, we recently purchased 4.5 acres of land acquired by Baltimore County located at 1517 Old Eastern Avenue. This marks the largest parcel of land dedicated to a single B C P L branch throughout all of our locations. It features include exciting design opportunities, increased walkability and convenient proximity to two of our local Essex schools in Martha State's Elementary and St. Stevens Academy. This is another Quinn Evans project, which recently completed community engagement meetings a few weeks ago on January 8th and 9th. And if you haven't seen it yet, there was a great article written in the Avenue News on January 15th about the community's excitement for this new library. In total, $6 million in state and county funding had been secured for design, but only to 30%. So we are hoping to get full funding for design and construction here.
Thanks, Justin. So the other project that we are really excited about is our Lansdowne branch. It's currently at 5,400 square feet. And as you can tell from the picture, it doesn't have a whole lot of curb appeal, right? So we're hoping to have a, a modern, beautiful, attractive facility that people want to go to, but something that's also three to four times its current size to adequately serve the Lansdowne community. The site is shared with other agencies, so we still need to come to consensus and decision about whether this is going to be a co-located facility or we're just going to have a standalone library. And so over the next year, we're going to be focusing on identifying the scope of the project and also focusing on gaining full funding for the project. Next slide. So the last one that I want to talk to you about is a potential new branch in the Middle River location. Middle River is the fastest growing part of Baltimore County. So this project would be less about equity and really more about timing. If we were to wait five, 10 years from now and say, hey, we need a library in Middle River, by then it'll be too late because all the good land will be spoken for and would have either been developed or be under development. So we approached St. John Properties about potentially building a new library in their Green Lay development. They're really excited about the opportunity to help us build what would be branch number 20 for us in Middle River. And it would be a win-win proposition. It would be an attractive amenity for a rapidly growing community. And we would get to better serve a community where we currently have a coverage gap. So the St. John Properties, the developer, they are, they've identified and they're holding on to a parcel of land where we could build a new library. And they would fund the design and the build out of a 45,000 square foot facility. And then they would lease, we would lease it back to the county. And so B C P L will be working with the county in our FY26 budget towards identifying funding for this project. Next slide. That concludes our presentation. Thank you for your support and I welcome any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions from the board, Mr. Hafer?
Just two questions. One is, I'm, I'm interested in the process for determining what new services are offered. This recording studio, was that identified in the needs assessment? I mean, with all of the, with all of the problems that a library can address. And clearly, I know over the years, the library has been underfunded. Where, where did this recording studio come from? And what was the data that supported this thing?
James, you want to cover that since you were there for the design portion?
Sure. The recording studio was, the, the origin of recording studio came about through very early on in the process of talking about a renovation for the Catonsville Library. Some community input, put sessions that we had and discussions with the community about what services they would like to see in the community, what their interests were. And we know that the, the, the music focus in the Catonsville community is very important and it's been a, has a historical presence in the community. There was a lot of interest in a, a recording studio that would be free and accessible in the library. So that was really the impetus for that. Over the course of the design process, we worked really hard to create the most accessible and easiest to use studio that we could for, for our citizens. That's really where that came from. Many of our libraries have sort of a special focus. So they'll have an area or a service that is unique to that community. So for example, up in our Hereford community, we have an art studio. So we're always looking for what community interests are, and if we can, in, in some way incorporate that into at least one of our service offerings.
Yeah. And flash forward to the present, now that we have the recording studios at the Catonsville Library, there is enormous pride in the Catonsville community that their library is the only library in the Baltimore County Public Library system with that amenity. And we hired a recording studio specialist whose job it is to work the equipment and to work with people on what they're recording. And every single appointment that we have for, available for people to book with the recording studio specialist is booked. And it just goes to show that, you know, we had a vision, we had an idea of what this would be, but we didn't realize it was going to be that popular. And the biggest group And the biggest group that is signing up for appointments is seniors, which was surprising because we thought it would be kids, it would be teenagers, it would be young people, and we are still seeing, we are seeing that demographic. But we're also seeing tons of seniors and families coming in and learning to use the equipment and recording music, podcasts, et cetera. So it's been a really, really, really successful.
Interesting. And my second question has to do with what you're calling the Middle River, the proposed new Middle River Library. Nobody on the east side calls Greenly Middle River. Middle River, really, there's a socio-economically disadvantaged part of Middle River, and then there's Greenly. So I'd be really careful. I mean, I understand of of, you know, taking advantage of this opportunity at St. John's properties or offering the property and all. But that's not where you need to put the library in Middle River. You need to put the library in Middle River over in the socio-economically disadvantaged part of Middle River, not Greenly. So just be be careful in how you try to sell that to the community because they're going to laugh when you, when you say that's Middle River.
Noted. Thank you for that suggestion.
Thank you. Mr. Haluka?
I guess I'm trying to get a handle. So you presented lots of great visions, and you're doing lots of great work. But am I reading the the capital budget right that you've got 1.9 million annually? Or am I, is there other funds that I'm missing here?
Yes, that's correct. Historically, that is what has been allocated for libraries. We have been successful in getting additional funding from Baltimore County Government. We've been successful in gaining funding from the state library, as well as Maryland State, and also through private sources through grants.
So all of the projects that you've been sort of laying out, the Essex Lansdowne, et cetera, can be covered with this basically $2 million a year kind of as long as you're bringing out additional outside money?
Yeah, no, we don't. We don't have enough capital funding to be able to cover the projects that we have, which requires us to get alternate sources of funding and additional sources of funding through Baltimore County Government.
Okay, that's that's the part that I wasn't quite sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think Ms. Alcara had a question.
I have a question. I just wanted to comment. I attended the King'sville Library grand opening or grand reopening. And I, the the support that the community gave was unbelievable. The amount of people that were there on probably the hottest day of the summer, I think it was about 100 degrees, probably plus standing in the sun, and people were across the street. The excitement that the community had for the library really showed me how important libraries are and how personal they are to each and every community. And it just, it just actually blew me away, and I was, I was super impressed with the presentation, and I was super impressed with the turnout from the community. And it was, it's gorgeous. It was very, very well done and very thoughtful. The the conception was was fantastic.
Thank you for that. I can take zero credit for the design and conception that this was, that was James's baby, start to finish, and he did a fantastic job working with the architects and with property management to to realize the vision, but it's so critical. Anytime we do any sort of project, we start with the community first. And we talk to them about what is it that they want and what is it that they need? Because at the end of the day, the library is for them. And it's not only is it for them, but it's for them and their children and their grandchildren. So it's really important that we be able to build libraries that are useful and relevant, and that can also stand the test of time. So we really do take great pride, enormous pride in Catonsville, yes, but all of our, all of our libraries and all of our capital projects.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board? Um, I had a quick question. In reference to the budget, do you guys actually put any budget into marketing? Right? So obviously, library is kind of like you said, you know, not to age all of us, but you know, you picture the library from fifty years ago, right? You picture these like old dusty books. You don't really picture this great recording studio, all these amenities that are you putting into there? I mean, how do you really reach that group that has kind of not really been quite as interested in the libraries?
We have a marketing and communication strategy department whose job it is is to market all the things that are happening at the library. And over the past couple of years, they focused on the communication strategy part of of their title, which is about connecting with non-users or people who don't traditionally come to a library. We know that, you know, there's 850,000 people that live in Baltimore County, and about half of them have a relationship with the public library. They have cards, they're checking out books, they're using our computers or using library resources, which is fantastic. But marketing and communication strategy has been more focused of late on reaching the other half, the people that don't have the relationship with the public library and connecting them to all of the wonderful resources that we have at B C P L.
Thank you. So you're really tracking the usage through the library cards, right? Kind of like who has the, I don't know if membership is really the word, but
That's the primary way that we track usage, but you don't need a library card to do all the things that we have at a library. So for example, you don't need a library card to just walk in and sit down in a chair or use a study room. You don't need a library card to to attend our programs. You, so it's it's one way, it's one key way of measuring usage, but it's not the only way.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Sure.
Anyone else? Thank you so much, Ms. Alcantara Antoine, and for your team for the presentation. It was very informative. And if there are no further comments or questions, we're going to adjourn. I just want to make sure, does planning staff or anybody have any questions or anything to add? Nope. Okay, great. Well, I'd like to thank all of the presenters tonight for their presentations. The next meeting of the Planning Board Committee on the Capital Improvement Budget and Program will be Thursday, January 23rd at 5:30 PM. The meeting will be held virtually. Information for that meeting can be found on the Planning Board's webpage, and I really thank everybody for their attendance tonight. And the meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.